Scott is working into the, working into the clubhouse, the community clubhouse.
Oh, true of all activities.
He was the one that had.
Hello.
He was the one that made the conversation. And apparently he hijacked it.
Oh, you did.
Hello, are you? Hi.
He's not part of the junkie knows who it is, who has access to it. And so they came out to all the residents and. Hey, you can get my other four members, how many of them? The mutual. So now you're, now we're all talking.
Oh, I got, okay, and then is Patty gonna sit in here?
Uh, that's, uh, it's gonna be Brian.
Do you wanna?
Yeah.
And, you know, power for us.
I need one though.
Absolutely. Those actually, hey, they love the horses, man.
I don't want to be a picture of a horse there.
I don't miss Ray. Hey, how are you doing?
Hello. I'm just here that we don't get to try to land it to most of us, you know what I mean? I'll be like.
Well, we gave. But. Here's a good. We have a, but he'll put their sign.
Did you say you were gonna throw bricks at me?
We never liked parks and buildings or anything like that. Parks and stuff, so I never made your ways, things design, but I do know our two twelve hour. I'm, I'm. I'm. One or any. When I was in.
Nice to meet you.
In that. Yes. I'm. 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 Scott is working into this, working into the clubhouse, the community clubhouse. He was the one that had. Hello. He was the one that made the conversation.
And apparently he hijacked it. Oh, you did.
I heard that. Hello, are you? Hi. My name's Tom.
Part of the junkie knows who it is, who has access to it. And so they came out to all the residents and. Hey, you can get my other four members, how many of them? The mutual.
This is.
Yeah. So now you're, now we're all talking.
Oh, I got, okay, and then is Patty gonna sit in here?
Uh, that's, uh, it's gonna be Brian.
Do you wanna?
Yeah. Thank you.
And, you know, power for us.
I need one though.
Absolutely. Those actually, hey, they love the horses, man.
I don't want to be a picture of a horse there.
I don't miss Ray. Hey, how are you doing?
Hello. I'm just here that we don't get to try to land it to most of us, you know what I mean? I'll be like.
Well, we gave. There's a good. We have a, but he'll put their sign.
Did you say you were gonna throw bricks at me?
We never liked parks and builders or anything like that. Parks and stuff, so I never made your ways, things designed, but I do know our two twelve hour. I'm, I'm. 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 One or any. When I was in. I'm. 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 Nice to meet you, man. Yes. I'm. 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 I'm.
Oh, yeah, you can keep it, that's fine.
I saw it, I was like.
I don't know.
Oh.
It's like, I don't know.
Me?
Yeah, well, you know, girl, it's like, I know this.
Oh. It's the me.
I was like, well, I'm gonna try to ride me little notes.
No, I had your note from last time. Yes. Yes. It's very small. Dehydrated.
Mmm.
So. No.
Ah.
Sorry, Chris.
I bet it is. Bye, Betty.
I haven't seen you forever.
What, he's just here?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Fairly, yeah.
It's a picture that works and. It's. It's. And it's. Every teenager meets a guy, loves her, has a kid in. And. 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 And.
Give a lot of likes, Benny.
She can. 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 She can.
Can you look right there in the back? A little livestream.
You're live.
Don't worry about it.
I've seen all these lights, but we're happening.
Yeah, it's going crazy. No excuse. There's nobody with it.
I did interviews with, like, Whitefish Vino and stuff.
All right.
I did. I did. I did. I did.
Oh, I have. I'm. 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 I'm.
I just. 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 And then. She was getting married.
They're. 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 She's gonna pick up. She's gonna. She's. 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 Like, you want to do a show on her? I don't know. I don't want it. Yours. Yeah. Are we ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. See, we have a quorum, I'm gonna call KCDC regular meeting agenda July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, six P M. To order. Um, number two, invitation to address council, or.
No.
KCDC, okay? Uh, number three, Taste of Chima presentation by Tony Bell. Hit the green button before you start talking. Give us your name and where you live, please.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of KCDC. Uh, my name is Tony Bell. I am the founder of Bell Empire Media, and today I'm proud to present a proposal to blend celebration, community, and strategy with the Taste of Chima. I live on Kip Avenue, so, uh, right behind here. Um, so I live on the corner of Kip and CN. In fact, my office is on CN. I don't do much outside of hanging out in the golf cart. If it's not a golf cart distance, then I really don't want to go there. So, uh, I am happy to say that, uh, I have a presentation that I'm gonna play here. And it's supposed to be paused. I don't know how it got blended altogether, but I'm gonna have you pause it after the second. So, the second slide here, can you see that okay? Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you wouldn't mind stopping right here. So, three years ago, I moved my family from Las Vegas to Chima. In Vegas, I produced large-scale, high-end events that generated millions for the hospitality industry. Uh, when we arrived, or I brought my family from Vegas to Chima, my focus changed. I started the company, and I put a magazine together called Chima Living. It goes to all the homes in Chima Clear Lake Shores and South Shore Harbor, um, which reaches, um, not only Chima, but it reaches parts of League City. So I forced them to identify with Chima because, obviously, they get the mail and they get to enjoy everything that comes in there. And most of the time, it's stories about Chima, and it's about the events that are going on in Chima. Chima is, um, a destination spot, so, um, being from Vegas, I'm very familiar with, um, that atmosphere. I really enjoy it here, and I'm focused on building a meaningful events that are focused on families here. Um, I am a resident since twenty twenty-two, and I put on recently the Chima Living Business and Food Expo at Chima Gardens. Um, we had about two hundred and fifty people there. We were happy to get, um, rid of all the free food that we were offering there. Um, we're planning another spring event there. It's a beautiful garden and a place, hopefully, we can plan additional events there. But my focus is on a new event under the bridge, and if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Which is called the Taste of Chima Festival. So if you wouldn't mind pausing it right here. We're proposing a family-focused festival right under the bridge, um, next to the Marina, uh, um, across from the Swamp Shack parking lot. It's my understanding that it's now clear and open. Now, it has had debris and construction, but it looks very clear and very doable for a event like this. Uh, this will showcase live music, food tastings from the area, kids' activities, vendor booths, all designed to bring the community together in a fun, inclusive, and unique Chima event. Um, what you're seeing right here is a rendering from a graphic artist that I have commissioned to put something together. Um, it is still in the beginning stages. It's a six-day project. He's on day two. I had him, uh, give me something today to show you. These are, um, some of the renderings that we're working on. If you wouldn't mind going to the next screen. Thank you so much. So, I took some pictures of the area and kinda highlighted where it would be. And if you wouldn't mind going to the next screen, we have some more of those renderings that the artist, um, has commissioned here for me. And you can see, if you wouldn't mind pausing here, um, there are some tents underneath the bridge. Um, essentially, there's water edge there that can be used with water activities and potentially a carnival-style extension of the boardwalk, which you see at the bottom right. Um, the idea is to have a food tasting opportunity for people and also for vendors to actually, um, sell goods if wanted. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Thank you so much. And pause right there. So, um, a full day is what we're offering, a whole experience. Every hour, there's something different going on. There's a music stage overlooking the bay. Now, as far as local food and chefs that are here, we have some phenomenal chefs. We have Michelin star-rated chef in Chima, and nobody knows about it, but I would love to have him there, as well as all the other options that we have in Chima. Um, hospitality and food is my background. Um, I'm a little bit ruined because I'm Michelin and Forbes-trained, and so my standards are a little bit high, but, um, that's because I have a commitment to excellence in everything that I do. Um, kids are what I deal with all along with my boys. I am involved with my kids. I love them so much that I try to put them in every sport and coach them as well. Um, I'm not that overbearing, but I do love the atmosphere, the family atmosphere. And so the idea is to have every single vendor that's participating have some type of craft or game at their booth to interact with the child. And so it's not seeming like, okay, this is a roofer that a kid's not gonna wanna talk to, of course, but there's a game there, it's interactive. And so the family atmosphere is really what I'm pushing for with this event here. An opportunity to highlight some amazing artists that we have. Um, there are several big-time artists, rodeo artists, if you will, that we could definitely bring to this area. It's just a matter of how much will it cost to bring them, because there is a demand for hiring artists. But we do have some amazing ones, such as Pierce and the, and the Purple Moon, or someone like Mighty York, or, um, Susan Hickman, if we're, if we're doing something more local and homegrown. So, um, the nonprofits have an opportunity in the area to, uh, to benefit from this event. Um, if you wouldn't mind going to the next stage, uh, uh, next, uh, uh, next slide here. This slide is just a simple, um, guesstimate on a projection of what we can do in year one. Now, um, in front of you, I have a proposal that has projections all the way up to year five, where we have it potentially capped off at a half a million dollar event per revenue. Now, one to two thousand attendance is what I expect at a very bare minimum. Um, as far as ticketed vendor sales, we have that type of revenue, revenue. And as far as the economic, uh, activity, this is just a guesstimate, of course.
My job as a marketing director was essentially to buy out the entire floor at a seventy-five thousand dollar cost. Um, logistically, put a unique vibe in every single room and make it essentially a must-be event when everybody's done with the club. Now, the club, that's more like three to six. Before I had kids, that was what I was doing. I met my wife in that environment. In fact, she was one of the models. And so I ended up getting back into the hospitality restaurant business. My wife wouldn't let me do that job anymore. Um, and for many good reasons, I couldn't live that lifestyle of Vegas. But once I decided it was time to move my family out of Vegas and move them here in a family-community-based area, um, I really felt that the festivals were something more aligned with my skill set. Now that I have the magazine that is going well and, um, we're getting a lot of great feedback and doing a lot of great events, I felt now is the time to essentially get this off the ground.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
How many magazines do you oversee or company?
Um, so I have two magazines. I, um, am putting one together in Seabrook and I'm also putting one together, well, the one that I have here is established. And, um, I have two partners or publishers that I work with in this area to help bring a family of essentially magazines in the Clear Lake area. My goal is to essentially maybe harvest or find other people who can put magazines in their neighborhoods, but Kima's mine. And they're going to essentially take what I'm doing and model after that. And I'm happy to, to train them and teach them that if that's what they want to do. But, um, in order to have, what I do is to, to get a magazine on the ground, I have to work with a company that can produce it. And so the company that produces is at a well-oiled machine. They have thirteen hundred magazines in the U.S., over a hundred in Texas, seventeen in Houston. So four in the Clear Lake. I'm the first one that started the Clear Lake one and then other people started to come on board and follow my lead.
Have you thought, like, when you show the rides, the first thing that comes to your mind is the boardwalk? So it would seem natural to think of collaborating with the boardwalk because you're bringing lives in separately. Is that a consideration?
You know what? Um, this should be a compliment. It should, it, which should definitely be an extension of the boardwalk. Um, I think that with my kids, they've been to the boardwalk over and over, that it's almost stale at this point. And so to have something fresh, unique, that is not those type of rides, maybe interactive like R.C., um, cars racing, um, you know, even the inflatables have kind of been done, you know, that aren't really... But you have so much there that you can do. I mean, even just that little waterway, you can have, I don't know if it's, there's liability things, issues with it, but you can have some type of zip line, if you will, that's fun for the kids, just to go along the, that waterway. It's unique, it's different, and you're using that space in a very cool way. Um, even there's the water right behind the bridge. So there's really cool R.C. boats that go really, really fast that the kids, my kids essentially love watching. And so just in that little space, you can have something there. It's a kid zone. It's not carnival rides that you can do over there on, on the other side. It's, it's rides and, and, and what you saw there was, was a graphic designer who didn't get my feedback yet to tell him that this is more likely what it should look like. And he just kind of threw some rides there together. So it's still in, in the process. And I wanted to show you something with that space, but the idea is not to have the same thing going on on that end of it. It's more or less to visually see that there's something happening underneath the bridge. And who hangs on, what's going on the bridge? We never even knew that's a spot. Well, now they know, oh, that's a spot. That's where they have the Taste of Kima Festival every year. And then essentially we can do other cool stuff with the pillars on there. And so the pillars right there, visually, you can do a lot of cool things with essentially different types of lighting and I can see a lot of great things there. But, um, I know that there's companies that can make it really fantastic. I've done things like this before. I've always, I've gone to the point where I've hired, um, showgirls and midgets that are doing, um, fly, flaming, uh, juggling and off-the-wall stuff that's crazy. But if we have a, a set hourly lineup or a schedule of street performers and things that are going on, then you essentially have the interest of everybody and you keep them ever longer spending money. So the idea is to consistently having something that turns the head, turns the eye. And most likely, I feel like I can find, uh, something like that that's going to be consistent on a year basis and, and, and step it up every year. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Ray?
Caesar, in the past, we've had really successful events here in Kima. It's probably been over a decade, um, since that has happened. And I know when you factor in inflation and everything else, um, I think to this board up here, one of our biggest, um, reservations with this is going to be that price tag, seventy-five grand is a lot of trust to put into one company. Um, I'm curious to know what we paid for, and I know, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but maybe for further discussion, I would be really curious to know if there's any record of what those very successful events like, uh, Kima Crawfish Fest, not the one that we did five, you know, in the past five years, but the one that used to, that everybody in Houston knew about, uh, whether it was good P.R. or bad P.R., but we were, our streets were flooded during Kima Crawfish Fest. And there were a lot of other ones. I'm sure Doug Meisenger can tell you more about it because he was a lot more involved back then in those events. But I would like to know what the price paint was like then, and of course, we'll factor in inflation and whatnot. But just for the sake of comparison.
I don't have that, but I will, uh, look into that and I'll bring that back for, uh, discussion.
That's for all our time.
Absolutely.
That's, that's, that's for the historians like Doug.
Um, I, I don't say, I wouldn't say that we would ever, could ever reach this. We possibly could, but something like the Catalina Wine Mixer, that, that's a unique food thing. Now, they sell helicopters at the event, so I don't know if the numbers are skewed there, but it's about a million to ten million is what they generate at that festival and they get about twenty-five hundred people home alone. Um, the Taste of, uh, the Top of Town Pasadena, in retrospect, was about, um, a hundred and fifty K. So the price points are, are really different there because they spend what they spend in Catalina. And people come here and they have an amount that they want to spend. So really keeping it within the area of the boardwalk is my focus, is if they're not going to spend it there, they're going to spend it at the boardwalk. Um, but my intention was to start something happening underneath the bridge because that is such a beautiful spot and it's got so much potential. And really, whatever you give me, I'm going to be able to make it awesome.
I know we'll have to work on the logistics because Matt Wiggins owns some of that land, the boardwalk owns some of that land. Uh, that would be needed to be utilized for it to be successful to the degree that you're talking about. So I mean, there'd have to be more conversations. He just brought this to my attention. I knew we were in budget, so I figured I'd come do a presentation so everybody knew that he is out there and aware of the possibilities. Uh, it needs to be fine-tuned, but I think he reached out to me last Thursday, Wednesday. It was kind of slamming on the agenda to get, get it here tonight. Uh, so I don't, this is really a good presentation considering the timeframe, but, uh... Anybody else got questions?
What is the timeframe? In a perfect world, when would you want to?
A perfect world, you'd want three months to promote it on that.
Okay.
So, um, if this is scheduled for November, then of course we're looking at all of August, September, and October right there. So that's why I wanted to get it on the agenda in July to essentially start selling tickets August first was my idea. Um, so that's really the timeframe that I'm looking at. If November's probably the latest we can do in the year, if we don't do November, then I would probably say it would have to be somewhere in the spring, unfortunately, if we're going to really get that amount of people in.
Are you concerned about crawfish? Because I know crawfish are huge in this area.
Uh, which in, for spring?
I'm just saying, if you did a spring one with crawfish, I think our attendance would be higher just because...
I'd love to do a crawfish one, absolutely.
I mean, I just think your attendance would be higher just due to the fact, I know Jackie sells a tremendous amount of crawfish. Yeah, I know for a fact because I talk to God about it all the time, so.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I just, if we're going to get this off the ground, I'd rather put it in a timeframe where I know this area is very hot on crawfish and there's a high desire for that type of food.
Might be a great initial.
Well, instead of going to something that we don't know, we know crawfish brings folks out just by...
Well, we also, to, to Tony's point, we also know that Taste of the Town brings people out. And like he said, it, the, uh, Pasadena function is thirty years old, but, uh, they do, it's one of their biggest events between the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce and the City of Pasadena, uh, that they host every year. And you don't really think about, uh, food when you think about Pasadena, Texas. But their biggest event is that Taste of the Town. So, and we've been talking, this board has actually talked about duplicating that event several times in the past. And we tried, I don't know how successful it was and I didn't get to go, but I heard from my second experience.
It's awesome and I could pull it off. And you know me and you know I'm all about Kima and I love it here, so I would not let it fail.
I just think there's a lot of logistics to pull it off in November and be far-fetched and it wouldn't be in our budget because our budget doesn't even renew until October first. So I mean, that wouldn't give you ninety days to even be prepared by November ninth. So I mean, it would be a spring event if this board decides to move forward during this budget cycle, so.
Okay.
Like I say, Dustin, you got any questions?
And Tony, I just like, I, I really like this. You know, one of the things that, uh, we've been talking about, obviously, our, our, our charter is to, you know, support businesses here, you know, help build new business. One of those is getting people to come out to Kima and stay there a little bit longer. And we know we need events, entertainment, activities to make that happen. We only have so much horsepower here in the city. We got Patty. And, and, and so to bring in some additional people to organize, put these things together, I think is a fantastic idea. I'm concerned about the location. I mean, we've walked that, Caesar, you know, I don't know if that's actually safe. Well, because there's no volcades, there's no warning, the, the ground's uneven. A tech's not supposed to be coming in. We're, we have meetings going on about how that's going to be resolved and remediated, but, uh, that's still all up in the air. When you've got, you've got dirt that's just going right into the basin there. It's soft, it's, I mean, I, I don't know if that's a good public space yet, but it will be very soon. That's one of our goals, do exactly what you're talking about, but I just don't know if you can pull it off this year.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board member comments. Dustin?
Uh, thank you for your presentation, Tony. Good to see you. Thank you for, uh, putting all this together on short notice. It is a lot of information here. That's all I got.
Okay. Great.
Same. Thanks for coming out, Tony.
Well, thank you. I, I think they're great ideas. I could definitely see opportunities to collaborate on some of the initiatives that we've talked about, whether it's publicity or marketing or bringing people in. So I appreciate you coming.
Good.
All right, moving on, President's comments. Um, I'm thinking I was going to say most of mine during the city administrator report, so, uh, I'm going to just go ahead and pass. Thanks, Tony, for coming out. Uh, number six, city administrator report.
Nothing to report today, other than the fact that we are still recovering from the last couple of weeks. We've got quite a bit going on. We're very excited about some of the things that we're working on. Um, busy.
It's extremely busy. And did you bring those business cards for the small business?
I have mine. I have mine.
Because I know I have a request from the board, because I know Caesar and I are working very, very hard at bringing new businesses to town and I've had probably twenty conversations with either CEOs or vice president of marketing or real estate in the last two or three weeks. I mean, my day today was four hours of business calls with potential developers in this town. But I really think we need to figure out, because we don't have an executive director, so I need to get the board more involved in going out and talking to our existing businesses with the small business that we all, I think council approved as well. So I mean, we're both on, on board with that initiative to see how we can help these small businesses that are just starting. Is there anything out there? I know I texted you about the food lovers, which Jennifer, I mean, just, just to make sure we're keeping that going because I mean, it's, it's great to get them here, but if they don't make it, then it's not going to do us a whole lot of good. We're doing the same thing over and over again and I don't have this much bandwidth, so.
Speaking of, did Ash from, um, the restaurant, My Dad's Place, reach out to you?
Not yet.
No, okay. I think they're, uh, I'll, I'll text her and remind her, but I think they're opening on Friday. Who said?
My Dad's Place.
That's the name of the restaurant. Yes, upstairs. Not my dad, uh, uh, no, it's upstairs, uh, where Lucky, Lucky's Surf used to be.
We would love to formally welcome them as we have with other businesses here lately.
Another thing I have is, is I know Isaac would still like to be involved in the Fifty-seven Acre Park, but at the next meeting, could we please have an agenda item to set up a committee so he could be on a sub, you know, some sort of committee with somebody on the board? Because I think it needs to be a board member that drives it and Isaac's assist. So if somebody is willing to take on that initiative, I know Isaac's hot and heavy about it, so... But if we can put that on the next agenda, somebody might volunteer, so.
Don't side-eye me.
Well, I like to know everything by the book and by the book it should be head up by a board member sitting up here, so I'd like to keep it that way. So he's more than willing to assist and he's got a lot of knowledge and been through the whole system. So I, I don't want to lose that knowledge by no means, but I really think it needs to be head, head-on by somebody on this board as the point of contact that brings all the information back to us. Uh, any other thing else?
I have just a brief question, just came up. It's not an agenda item per se, but I guess I could bring it up and just ask the question, uh, informally. Have we ever had a KCDC slash council retreat together? Where we got together and asked some type of...
It's started several times and it always just fades. And one or two meetings and then it fades because most of the time it needs to be done in the end of the day and most of us can't make it, so.
Just the reason why I'm saying it's a have, just wanting, and it could be early evening like this and we could usually just get some dinner and kind of roll our sleeves up and work together. But it's more of a, of an informal setting to kind of get this dialogue, get the direction. We talked about the, uh, strategic plan that Ms. Jackie and I still have to get together to get the scope together on, but the general idea is to provide some type of direction of where we're trying to go with these things. So Mr. Bell, you know, I've had quite a few phone calls from other folks, just like he, who are saying, hey, we'd like to start considering you guys as a destination for, you know, some type of festivals or bigger events and whatnot. So as those phone calls continue to come and we open ourselves up for that, you know, we have the open RFP right now for just exactly that. Um, we've already had one responded right now, which is the markets that are going. We want to try to cater to that. If we're going to be destination, to what extent do we want to be that destination?
I think if we went like on a quarterly basis, it'd probably work, but trying to do it every month gets...
It wouldn't be, it would be a one-time, let's get together, let's set some type of direction of kind of where we want to go. Because if we are going to go out and get folks like Mr. Bell who want to come and bring this forward, then how are we going to attack that? Right? What, 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 what direction are we going to go to do that? Are we going to put all our eggs in the basket of, hey, this year's focus are going to be, we're going to attack special events, the linear park and see if we can complete phases three and four of Fifty-seven Acre Park, for example? Just so we can put all our eggs in the basket when it comes to those things and things that are aligned in those ways that we can try to pursue. Is it going to be going after sponsorships for some of these events? Is it going to be going after grants for some of these things? And just, I, I, I guess I would like that from my perspective, we have so many folks here that are so passionate, just to kind of see how we're going to guide and, and drive that a little bit. Just came to mind right now as I sat here and so I just want to get some general direction on that.
I'm on both sides of the coin, so I have to be there.
There you go. And, and I don't know, maybe this is, if it's happened before unsuccessfully, maybe we do a little bit different. I, I would not...
It's usually just a, a workshop. It usually happens every year around budget season. It happens a couple of times. They started doing lunch, um, meetings, um, after I specifically said.
Yeah. If we did something like last summer and it quickly faded. If we just did one together, early evening like this, you know, like, like around this time, where both groups came together and said, all right, what are we thinking?
I think if we had an agenda and stuck to that agenda and had something to, so it didn't go, get too broad, I think it would be effective.
Okay, got it.
If, if we allow it to just grow internally, I think it sometimes gets out, out of scope.
Got it. Only I get to make the agenda. Right between the lines. Got it.
All right, item seven, KCDC executive director report. I guess that'd be you, Caesar, since, where's Ryan?
It's funny because I've had quite a bit of communication with, uh, uh, Ronnie lately. He's been very helpful on quite a few things. Our focus right now has been business retention, not just with, um, reaching out to businesses. Darren's worked very hard on that and I've, uh, helped to facilitate in whatever matter. Um, I do want us to make sure that we can keep in mind for our next meeting to see if we can come in a little bit earlier or plan on staying a little bit later because we do have to have the actual budget discussion uh, for this next year to set those priorities and how we're going to assign, you know, funds towards those. Uh, but business retention, getting the, uh, uh, MOU with, with the small business group has been great. Now it's time to implement that. I know several people up here, Sean in particular, mentioned his desire to work on, uh, business retention. So that's going to be one of the efforts that we try to focus on, uh, the strategic plan as well. Uh, putting that out to get a, um, um, RFP out on that. The direction was very clear that there is an appetite for that. Now we have to put some juice behind that. Um, and finding out, again, in search of direction so we can make sure that we're tracking the right direction. Because we can grasp at straws and, oh, this looks great, this looks great, but I want to make sure that we maintain focus. Uh, so that's the perspective of the report from, from, from there. Um, I'm happy to report sales tax is up. You'll, you'll see it the next, uh, sales tax report that, 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 that is presented. Um, we've been busy. Um, even though the efforts of Fourth of July may not have been a direct impact on sales tax, but I think that we did very good and more importantly, had no major incident. Um, also sadly, uh, we, we, we put some effort together into a, uh, support effort for the folks in, in central Texas. Um, Darren, thank you, all that participated boardwalk for their donations and so forth. Um, I think it made a pretty good impact. And I think it's letting people see that Kima is more than just a sales tax community. So it really was a great outpouring of, of, uh, people's hearts.
Well, we'll be on the reciprocating side of that in one day. I mean, we will have a hurricane and it'll be us on that other side of that coin, so.
Absolutely.
Hearts out to all of those in central Texas. One thing that did come up and I'm just going, we'll probably have to have a special meeting next week because one budget, two, uh, we have a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant that kind of popped up and it looks like we're very, very favorable. Uh, it's one point five million, fifty-fifty match. And the application is due August first or second. I'm going to get that wrong.
I always put an internal deadline in forty-eight hours before, so July thirtieth is our internal deadline.
Okay, so we'll probably have to have a special meeting just to get that approved. It got in in time to get on council for tomorrow night, but not in time to get on this agenda tonight, so... If I can steal five minutes, and I think Ryan needs to steal about thirty or forty minutes of your time for budget probably, so we can get that resolved and get it sent to council before they make their final decision. So we won't make it too long because we have to, we can finish it in July meeting, but I won't make sure we get... He'll send out a preliminary one. I think we've been working on it, but give y'all a preliminary one so that next week we'll, we can hash out the numbers and justification as to why the numbers are where they are. So be looking forward. Is there a day that doesn't work for anybody?
Next week?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, not Tuesday.
Not Tuesday? Anybody else got anything that?
Next week is good.
Okay. I'm not more for more meetings, I promise. I got enough, but sometimes you have to do it.
Monday night, uh, there's, uh... Huh? Yeah, I was going to say, ESB and WCID.
Oh, Wednesday, right, next week for everybody? Because I'll just do it on Wednesday. Wednesday at six. Can we do that in touch?
Yes.
Just make sure we got a quorum. Anybody else you got? Caesar for executive report?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll move on to item number eight, consent agenda. I need a motion for approval of the minutes for the six-three-twenty-five KCDC special meeting. Second? Dustin's?
Second.
Tom is second? All houses in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passed. Uh, item nine, consider impossible action item. Consider impossible action to approve a budget amendment to provide funding for the lighting at CN Park.
This item's one that came up. Uh, this was, uh, pending even from the time when Aaron was here. Went ahead and got quotes. Um, we put this project on hold because of the language in the agreement for, uh, Wiggins Park itself, or excuse me, CN Park, uh, that, that existed where we wanted to make sure that we had enough ability that if we placed these upgrades on, onsite, that we would make sure that they weren't going to turn around and thirty days later revert back and say, well, we can have the land back. So in the agreement that went to council already, uh, it's been about a month now, um, we now have the fact that they cannot ask for it back within ten years. Um, they've agreed to that point and now we're at the point of deciding that we're ready to take on this challenge. Um, this group is already, uh, taking care of lights over at Foster Park. CN Park is the other park that, uh, had some issues for safety that Richard's already reported. At this point now, you have three vendors in front of you. The vendor that makes the most sense based on pricing, um, seems to be the first quote that is, uh, enclosed, uh, which would have been from Electric Works. However, I do point out that they charge an additional seventy-eight hundred for the trench work that On the Way Electric includes in their quote, technically making On the Way the, uh, most responsive vendor as far as pricing. The city has done work with, I believe, all three vendors that are, uh, listed, uh, most recently having done work with both On the Way, um, and Electric Works.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Is this something we want to make an amendment to now or wait two months and have it in the budget?
I don't think the quotes are going to hold that long. Uh, we've already re-quoted them several times. This is just something for us to consider.
One thing I asked from Lieutenant Rees in a meeting I had with him last week and the chief was, they've got these camera systems they brought in for July fourth. They're testing them out to see if, uh, which one they wanted to go with. I think they had five or six different manufacturers bringing in cameras.
Three different manufacturers with five different types of cameras.
And I know one of them had some problems while I was here. They'd like to have a chance to rectify that. So I'd asked maybe if we put the camera at CN Park. They said they can count people. I would like to know in a thirty-day period, how many people walk through that gate? We keep spending money and we don't know how many people actually utilize the park, so just... So some way we start justifying spending money on a park that's unutilized. I don't want to be doing that. But I mean, I'm not opposed to this because I think this will help utilization, but that is something I did request of Rees. If the vendor's going to allow us to keep it for another thirty days. Plus, we want to see if it's got enough night vision to compensate for the Fifty-seven Acre Park because we don't have any cameras up there and we do not need to vandalize, so.
Sure.
And the grand opening's what, next week?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks.
So everybody can please mark your calendar if you haven't.
The thirtieth.
For the thirtieth at nine AM if you're available. Sorry? I thought you said nine. I'm sorry. Either way, you will be receiving invitations, but, uh, yes, indeed, we... From all reports that I've gotten, this is the busiest park that we have in our system right now before the official opening of, of Fifty-seven Acre Park. Um, we do see it as the most visited. Um, to get a head count and so forth, we would need to be more, um, more specific. So what a consideration for you to, to have would be that. It's fine.
Guess my question, Ron, would be, I mean, we haven't spent the beautification and I don't know of any projects that are coming on between now and the end of budget. Do we want to just reclassify it for a beautification since we got that money already reserved? Just make a...
Yeah, what is there?
I mean, unless somebody knows of a beautification project. We did all the benches. We did all, we did all that last year with the excess funds. We had Ronnie order everything that we were missing as far as trash cans, benches, to make, get rid of all the blue barrels and all the benches that Public Works had recommended to us.
One thing we, we've also had discussions on, 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 happened to be the same park, uh, because it has the, the wooden fence along the back, but maybe like a mural project at that park, which now having lights would bring more art to the city, especially to a part of town that doesn't have a whole lot of art, um, or a whole lot of light. That's a, that's a, that's a possible consideration, uh, for us to maybe have. Obviously with the savings here, this was the cost of what it was going to cost to put four solar lights up. Here you're getting eleven, uh, lights as well as lighting underneath the basketball court area, um, which does allow you to now light that area, light outside, but also provide security lighting, but also you have power there. So now if you do want to add cameras, you'll be...
Now we're going to add cameras because that's the problem with Fifty-seven Acre...
It still doesn't add the, inside the restaurants though, right?
No, does not.
But now there's power there, so Richard can go and light it.
We could, we could do that a lot easier. The biggest, the biggest issue with, with, with CN Park in particular was it does not have power running to it now.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Tom. Do I have a second?
What?
What do you, which one, which one are you approving? I guess we better clarify.
The, uh...
Which, which vendor? Just making sure we got it documented.
On the way.
Okay.
And where's the money coming from?
Going to be a reclassification. I would suggest out of beautification since we're not going to spend that money between now and the budget that I know of, unless somebody knows something I don't.
Yeah.
There's twenty-five thousand sitting there. There's 25,000 sitting there in reserve right now for beautification.
Yeah, streaks give out a 1.1 and a half million, so.
So do I have a second?
Second.
Have, you got that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all unanimous.
So this item will be coming uh, tomorrow night to council as well, so we can proceed, proceed accordingly.
Okay, item number 10, executive session, we will go into executive session at 6:44.
You know what, I haven't got the. I got a chance with Chuck. Y'all, y'all don't have to be too long.
I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you so much, it's nice meeting you. It's nice meeting you.
Ryan, would you go? If you have the opportunity?
I wouldn't, but I do know a local manager. My brother? So he's a state record holder for.
No, they're just saying you want to do executive session and then come back out and you're gonna take action or not?
Okay, so then you speak or not?
I don't know.
It's not for, not for your.
He's a state record holder for.
I was in uh.
So.
I know my. My um, my nephew and mom.
Oh, I understand.
Look at that.
He probably wouldn't do it anyway because I already told him the Discovery Channel was gonna be uh.
I'm covering it?
Filming it, I'm gonna be asking him questions.
Yeah, they're all.
The PETA and all the other stuff he dealt with after.
Oh, really?
Oh yeah, those months, just social media and all kind of stuff, just attacking it.
This is so cool, I get a um, I get a email message on my Gmail account every time. Now lock on your channel, now lock on your channel, now lock on your channel, that's all that comes with this, now lock on your channel.
I'm just worried I'm gonna be videotaping me backlash and all of this. Like, bro, I don't, I don't throw Baycasters, man.
Oh, I'm watching this lady cut a t-shirt.
Cut a t-shirt?
Cut it up. She's taking, it's supposed to be like taking a boxy t-shirt and then like making it cute. It's cute.
So if you're looking to do stuff without rain, tomorrow and Thursday, I think are gonna be the days to do it.
Tomorrow and Thursday, is that right?
Maybe. Let's probably give me your best bet.
So, talk to the city about Asian fusion is closed, what under place compares to? Hold on, but Asian fusion, Kima.
Do we have one too?
Right there, right there.
Say it, say that. They're all no way.
What place compares to Asian fusion, Kima, first? I mean, I haven't been to the other one.
They're incredible.
Got the same name. Well, I guess that means their house is going up, certainly live on the street. People that run the Asian fusion in, we say.
Really?
Yeah, I found that they live, that, well, we knew they were in a restaurant.
Yeah.
Because at like 10:30, they come flying, all of them come flying down the street and pull into the house. So I finally figured it out. I caught a chicken one here. Hey, I got some own chicken in the backyard, a little for the kids. And it got out and I called it. There's an ordinance that requires us to use local vendors.
The what?
There's an ordinance apparently that we have that require us to use local vendors.
Okay. Are you asking me? Oh.
That there is a figure within 3% of. That uh, within 3% of, of to be awarded bid that we have to use them.
That sounds like the purchasing policy, right? No?
You guys are looking at me the way I look at them when they ask me to.
You said 3%?
So they're 3%, taking 3% down low.
I can't spell that. Purchasing. Is that online here or?
First of all, see.
Is it under finances or something?
Uh, under finance, first. Procurement pro, uh, policy, son.
I won't address this without a fair comment from check G P T S N.
Change orders? 5%? Do you want to look on screen real quick and see if this is what you're talking about? That, maybe?
That is it. For contracts less than 100,000. Is that an ordinance?
No, that's that. Texas.
Coming down from down. And can you print that section, local government?
Texas local government code of purchasing. You want me to send this to you in teams?
Uh, yes, but you can also send me the other scripture that's. For the 5% of Texas local government. Not the city Kima.
Okay, I'm sending it to you right now. Page 13. Me? Do I know?
Contracts less. Seriously, he's walking one. Oh, interesting. Just as if they're within 5% of the lowest bid.
So, do you want to go back there? Ooh, you want to go back there and talk to him?
No, you just said it, I'm right.
Yeah. That's some local, local, local government code, good lord, I can't speak today. I'm like, that's so cute.
Those principles plays. Those principles plays in this... City.
Yep.
Well, here's the thing. You don't have to pick the lowest bidder.
Mm-hmm.
So, because if you got Steve Spolstra. We're making that up, I don't know Steve Spolstra. And they've done work for the city before and it was not good. And he bids another job and he's lowest, you're like, no, we're not using him. And long as you just put right, wow, we're not using Steve Spolstra. Understand that they, yeah, you want to use the local people. But if you don't... Basically, if you don't pick the lowest bidder, you have to write.
Justify.
Yeah, I don't understand why they're like five percent or whatever. So...
Yeah, I've met up sometime in Illinois, working for the city college station. They were buying some furniture. And, um, I heard all the furniture, office and furniture. And then the furniture stores came and said, why didn't you buy from us locally? And they said, because you're a little more expensive. And you've got that balance of being careful with taxpayer dollars over buying local, you know?
Yeah, say, I came to you, sir, and you were...
You were whatever either.
Yeah, a hundred fifty dollars chair and we got it for a hundred. So...
And when you're buying five hundred chair, or, you know, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Not five hundred, but, you know what I mean?
But, I mean, if we're buying one chair, yeah, we'll probably show you.
Yeah.
But if we're getting five hundred... Probably not.
There's a tipping point when you've got to figure where the great event is.
Yeah, but, I mean... You're talking about a hundred thousand dollar contract, it's five thousand dollars. It's like, if you're a local guy, five thousand dollars isn't really that much money. So, you'd be like, yeah, we want to go with Steve Spolstra because he's our local guy. He could be here, if there were a problem, he'd be here for five minutes.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll beg him, right?
Well, and, yeah, that's why there's this separate intuitive, that meeting specifications and the, you know...
What?
Where'd you go? If you wear glasses, we expect a lot from you academically. Because I failed an eye test where the answers were in front of me. You misplaced your expectations. They're having taco tummy, it's cold. Oh, it's really cold.
Morning up? Should have screenshot those, let's see.
Is that them?
It's the old job card.
Send it to who? Oh, say, no, do not. Do not.
Tucson?
Don't be sending them nothing.
It's only seven grand.
No, you can find us out.
It says excellent condition.
Hardly getting rid of it, son.
Excellent condition, because I've got ninety thousand miles.
Seven, oh, my god.
Damn. There's more than one.
No.
They're like three years newer than the ones we have.
Oh, damn, mercy.
Some of the dollar corn dogs. Dollar corn dogs. Two dollar hump dogs, three dollar cones.
Oh, my god. Hey, do we have massage chairs in the budget? For council chambers? Come on, man. Bro.
Got restraint chairs for the...
No. No. Do they have massage feature? We can make it work. Come on, man. You look, it's crazy right now.
That did you.
There flooded, go back.
No, that's not, that was recent. So like, uh, the subway was like flooding. People were sitting in the car instead of actually getting out. I'm like, hello, if the tunnel fills up, you're gonna drown. Well, I guess you've got a warning might be issued. I guess it's got a warning on it, I wish. Oh, Mon Beach is fifteen dollars every Wednesday.
I don't know what that is.
Do I shave one leg after two hours?
Yes. A little roasted. It's cold, baby. Huh? It's snowing in the mix there right now?
Yeah.
Look, bro.
Thank you.
You're not gonna come. Um. You're sounding like you're coming from a really, really, um...
Right.
Hmm, hmm. This is, this is so stupid. It says if you don't stop eating all your hurricane snacks, you won't fit in the little helicopter basket, helicopter rescue basket. Here to come.
We like the round two part.
No.
Which is...
Conference.
No.
That way Dawson Black is gonna think he knows this shit. Oh, yes. It's just time, I promise. Too late.
Last Caesar.
Oh, the last Caesar. I was wondering where, no.
Are we live?
Yep.
Sorry. Ready? Call execs conception back into order at seven forty. Action items, consider impossible actions regarding economic development negotiations. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Tomato Group DBA Tuckies with two specific changes. Number one, with regarding the loan, each loan investment dollar paid to Tuckies will be matched by Tuckies prior to payment from Kima. Number two, Tuckies will adhere to local government ordinances for the use of local vendors.
Do I have a second?
A second to the motion.
You got that Natasha?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Does anybody have any closing comments? Not on here, but I'll open the floor if anybody has a closing comment. Okay, well, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven forty-one. Thank you very much.